Good morning, members, and welcome to this meeting of the Weyton Divisional Licensing Board. This meeting is being recorded and will be made available for viewing through the Licensing Board webpage. Please follow the good practical guidance which includes switching off your video when you're no address in the meeting. Write and speak in the team's chat function when you wish to contribute. Please don't repeat contributions already made by other members. No material should be posted in the chat function if it is intended as part of the discussion. The usual standing orders apply, including that any votes will be undertaken by roll call. All members should speak clearly and directly into the microphone when making contributions and when referring to reports. Please provide reference to the relevant page and paragraph to allow everyone to follow. Please focus contributions on areas where clarification is required or to propose an alternative to a recommendation. And members, we'll move on to item one, which is the settlement of apologies and convenia's approval of members' remote participation. Approve of the remote participation of members, and clerk, can you provide the settlement and any apologies, please?
Thank you, convenia. If I may, I will just go through a roll call just to ascertain which member is here and which member isn't. So I can see yourself, convenia. Has councillor Dashper joined us this morning? I'll take silence. Councillor Dashper, you're here with us?
Hiya.
Thank you. Councillor Hagman?
Yep, I'm here, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hill, I can see. We have apologies from the councillor Ingles and councillor McCammon, I can see is present. So we have apologies from councillor Ingles, convenia, and we are quoted with five. Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. Members, do we have on to item number two? Members, do we have any declarations of interest? I see none. Moving on, item number three, Licensing Scotland Act 2005, premises licence review, section thirty six. Premises, La Horca Hare, number thirty one, St John Street, Stranraer, premises licence holder Mohammed Akhtar. Report by the clerk to the board. Clerk, could you please go through this, report and perform the procedure for this item?
Thank you, convenia. And can I first of all just ask whether Mr Mohammed Akhtar, the premises licence holder in respect of La Horca Hare is present this morning? Mr Akhtar is not here, and is there any representative here on behalf of Mr Akhtar?
No.
Okay, so, members, Mr Akhtar is not present, he doesn't have a representative here. So you can hear this item in his absence, or you can defer. If you wish to consider this item at future date and ask Mr Akhtar to attend. But we have obviously sent notes of the hearing to Mr Akhtar. So convenia, just asking whether you wish to hear this item in his absence?
I'll open up to members. Members, are we happy to listen to take this hearing without Mr Akhtar? I'm comfortable to, and councillor Dashper is, so yes, Caroline, we're comfortable to hear this item.
Okay, thank you, convenia. So this is an application for a premises licence review in respect of La Horca Hare at St John Street, Stranraer. The premises licence holder being Mr Mohammed Akhtar. On the eleventh of May, two thousand and twenty-three, the Licensing Standards Officer submitted a request for review of a premises licence in respect of La Horca Hare. And that application is detailed at appendix one to the report. An LSO can only make a premises licence review application if they follow a certain statutory procedure. The first must be that one or more of the conditions to which the premises licence is subject has been breached. And only if they've actually served a section fourteen notice from the licence holder. And the licence holder has failed to take the action specified in that section fourteen notice. The section fourteen notice, members, is detailed at appendix two. And you'll notice that it states that the details of the breach of a condition is breach of mandatory condition ten in terms of schedule three to the Licensing Scotland Act two thousand and five for non-payment of the annual fee. The annual fee in law must be paid as required by the regulations which stipulate on the first of October each year. And in respect of these premises, there is now standing sum of two hundred and twenty pounds for the year two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three. In relation to correspondence with the premises licence holder. Paragraph two point six of the report details that on the second of September, two thousand and twenty-two, records show that a reminder for non-payment of this outstanding sum of two hundred and twenty pounds was sent to the licence holder. There was a further email sent on the seventeenth of January, two thousand and twenty-three. And a letter detailed at appendix three dated the second of February, two thousand and twenty-three, reminding the licence holder of their legal duty to pay this annual fee. Notwithstanding that correspondence, the annual fee was not paid. And the LSO, as due to appendix two, has served on the licence holder's section fourteen notice. So it's a two-step process here, members. You've been asked to first of all ascertain whether a ground for review of the licence exists. I.e. whether there has been breach of mandatory condition number ten, schedule three to the two thousand and five act, that non-payment of the annual fee, and that annual fee has not been paid. We may wish to just get an update from officers, convenia, as to whether that annual fee has been paid or not since this hearing has commenced. And thereafter, if you find a ground for review has been established, you have the discretionary power whether you wish to make an order or not. You don't need to make an order, you may. And the options available to you are to issue a written warning to the licence holder. Make a variation of the premises licence, suspend the licence for such period as you may determine, or revoke the licence. In terms of procedure, members, unfortunately, Mr Akhtar is not here. He's not got a representative representing or to speak on his behalf. So I would just ask that you digest the terms of the report, have a discussion with yourselves. I'm here to give guidance and assistance as required. What I will say is Julia Farrell, our LSO, is not present. And she's the author of the report and made the premises licence review request. But we do have our other LSO, Emma Connolly, here with us, who will be there to perhaps speak to the application and maybe take questions from yourselves and thereafter discuss prior to going into session. Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. Members, can we move on to the LSO and can we hear from yourself, please, Emma?
Good morning, convenia. So as you'll note, I'm not actually the author of the report. In addition to the report, I did have a catch-up with Julia. And she advised that on the fifteenth of June, she had spoken with Mr Akhtar on the phone. And he had again discussed the surrendering of the licence. At that point, Mr Akhtar had advised he wanted to speak to his solicitor and that he would call back. There has been no further call received. Again, on the twentieth, just yesterday, Julia made attempts to speak with Mr Akhtar, however, was unable to reach him. And to my knowledge, there has been no further contact from Mr Akhtar at all.
I know, well, Emma. Members, I believe we're now into say, I believe we've now got to decide what grounds for our review here. I believe we do. Do we have any candidates? I'm not seeing anyone putting their hands up, so I'm assuming that we're all, well, I'm assuming that we're all agreed and that we've got the terms of review here. So, members, we're in session. I would like to maybe ask one question of our LSO before we go any further. On page seven of our report here, one of the items under the heading following the background information, submit for our information. It says that on the seventh of September, there was a letter requesting payment. And at the end of that paragraph, well, at the end of that, that bullet point says this letter set out various options to pay. Could you give us a quick rundown on what those various options to pay are, please, Emma? If it's like, are they able to create like a monthly payment scheme? Or is that just options to present, so you could pay by back, you could pay by cheque card, or etcetera?
Thanks, convenia. I think it may be easier if the senior licensing officer explained this. Purely because this is a back office function that I don't have direct involvement with. My understanding is that they are, there is an option to pay by monthly direct debit in addition to kind of backs payments, checks. Payment can be taken over the phone by contact being made with the office as well. But happy for that to be clarified by the senior licensing officer.
Aiden, here at the moment. And yes, I can confirm they have options to pay by either monthly or quarterly direct debit. And then any other way they like, by backs, cheque, card, over the phone. So nothing has been paid at all so far.
Thank you for that, Aiden. So, members, we're open here to make a decision. Do I have any proposals going forward? Without any proposals coming forward from, oh, Catherine McCollum?
Yeah, just what I mentioned in the pre-meet, convenia. That we give them a tight deadline for one last chance, if you like, and issue them with a written warning.
Thank you. Catherine Hagman?
Thank you, thank you, convenia. I don't really want to put this to a vote as such because, you know, it's two hundred and twenty pounds, it's not being paid, you know. I appreciate that we've got the report in front of us. I'm also aware of setting precedent that it's okay to get multiple letters and multiple warnings being pulled into the board, and we don't actually act upon that. I'm sure my reputational, I think it would be important that we do. I mean, my preference, but as I say, I'm not wedded to this, that I feel that we should be split and go to a vote. So it's really just for dialogue and discussion. But my preference would be that we suspend the licence until the payment is made and review it at our next hearing. So that would be my thoughts on the matter. I think to go straight to revoking the licence would not be seen as reasonable. And, you know, various written warnings have already been made with no effect. So the fact that our officer has requested this to come in because that written warning hasn't had any effect. I'm not sure if another written warning would have any effect. But that's just my thoughts and open for debate on that one. Thanks.
Thank you, Catherine Hagman. Do we have any other members with any thoughts on this one? If I had any other members coming in, I'll give you my thoughts personally. I perhaps disagree with both, and Catherine McCollum, I believe that we do have the grounds for our vocal here. And that is because we've got so much evidence in front of us of officers contacting and a dialogue between officers and the licence holder. And we're coming up to nearly a year now of contact. And I've been satisfied that there are various ways to pay, such as a monthly direct debit. We've tried, the officers have tried to contact Mr Akhtar. Caroline, you might be able to confirm, was it the twenty-fifth of June, or the twenty-fourth of June, did you say? Which was yesterday?
Yes, I believe. Sorry, who was that question addressed to, convenia?
Sorry, that, I can't remember who actually brought that, or was it Emma or Emma?
Yes, it was Emma Connolly, our LSO, she maybe, yeah, said that the contact was made. On the fifteenth of June, the LSO duly spoke with Mr Akhtar. And he discussed surrendering the licence, but he wanted to contact his solicitor. And then on the twentieth of June, Emma, our LSO, has advised that Julia advised her that she attempted to reach Mr Akhtar but was unsuccessful, unsuccessful in reaching him. So the fifteenth of June is when she, Julia, our LSO, spoke with Mr Akhtar.
Thanks for that, Caroline and Emma. So on that basis, members, I'm quite, I'm quite comfortable with the amount of communication that has been going on. The licence holder understands and knows that this payment has to be made to maintain a licence. I would be suggesting we revoke this licence. I know we've got free options on the floor now, so I'll offer this to other members to bring opinions. Catherine Dashper?
Yeah, I'm inclined to agree with you, convenia. As far as I can see, it seems that we've been in contact with them since September last year. This is, you know, it's a serious fee that needs paid, and that's quite a significant amount of time. Considering that he's also, you know, gone back and forth from whether he wants to surrender his licence. To me, that seems a little bit sort of wibbly-wobbly, you know. So I'm inclined to, you know, get go with the convenia's recommendation, suspend the licence.
Thank you, Catherine Dashper. Do we have any?
Beg your pardon, convenia. Councillor Dashper said he's inclined to go with your thoughts and suspend the licence. It was just for clarity because your thoughts were to revoke the licence. Thank you, councillor Dashper. Not at all, thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. Catherine Hackney?
Thank you, convenia. I don't, as I said at the start, I didn't particularly want to bring this to a vote as such. But I am concerned about the sense of reasonable action on this one. And I would not want the board to be left in a vulnerable position where we could be seen to be not acting in a reasonable manner. And I appreciate there's lots of information that's gone backwards and forwards. But to revoke a licence over two hundred and twenty pounds, I don't believe would be reasonable. So therefore, I would actually propose that we stick to the suspension. And my rationale for, you know, almost putting that to a vote is because I would be concerned that we would be left in a vulnerable position. And that could be subject to appeal. Now, whether the appeal would actually go ahead for all sorts of reasons, you know, that's not what I would base that on right now. But I just, I don't feel that it would be reasonable to revoke a licence over two hundred and twenty pounds. I believe a suspension until it's paid and then we can review it. So I would propose that as an alternative. I don't know if anyone's a second mate, but I'll put that on the table. Thanks.
But thanks for that, Catherine. I saw Caroline, your hands up, and then Jackie McCollum?
Thank you, convenia. It was just to give a wee bit of guidance here. So if the licence is suspended, it remains in effect with the payment of the annual fee still a legal obligation. But obviously, if it's suspended, they cannot trade. A ground of appeal is indeed that you must exercise your discretion in a reasonable manner. You have a discretion here, you must act reasonably, and you must act proportionately. So it was just to draw that to your attention, that need to be reasonable and be proportionate in terms of a legal ground of appeal. If it is a suspension, the legal obligation to pay the annual fee still remains in place. Although the licence holder would not be able to trade. If you revoke the licence, it cannot be resurrected in law. And the payment of the annual fee obligation ceases upon revocation. And if you issue a written warning to the licence holder, this is if you do wish to make an order because you do not need to make an order in law. You've established that a ground for review of the licence exists via breach of that mandatory condition number ten, schedule three, the two thousand and five act. Then it is a non-payment of this annual fee that remains outstanding. You do not need to make an order, but if you do, you have those options, as you're fully aware in the report. Issue that written warning, in which case there is the obligation still remains to pay this legal statutory fee. And the licence remains in effect and the premises licence holder can still trade. Suspension, the legal obligation remains to pay that annual fee still. But you couldn't trade, and you can suspend up to a period as you may determine. And of course, revoking the licence has taken it away completely, it cannot be resurrected. And there is a legal obligation to act reasonably and proportionately and use your discretion in a reasonable manner. Thanks for that, convenia.
Thanks, Caroline. Catherine McCollum?
Thanks, convenia. I mean, I'm not going to make anything any more easier decision-wise. I'm afraid I'm going to stick with my decision purely based on, on for reasons that Katie stated that revoking a licence completely would, I think, not be reasonable. However, councillor Hagman's proposal, in part, I agree with, but suspending it and a written warning allows him to continue to trade, which means that they could be bringing income in to help pay the fee, if that's the issue. If we're still asking them to pay the fee but stopping them from trading, I don't think that, I think that's a bit counterproductive. So I'm afraid I'm sticking with my proposal. And again, I don't suppose I'll have a second ear, and I don't know where we go from here.
Thank you for that, councillor McCollum. For a second there, if we had councillor Ingles in, this might have went to a counter-amendment, amendment, a motion. But councillor Hill, would you like to come in and give us your thoughts?
Yeah, I kind of feel the same way councillor McCammon does. That if we take the licence away and it stops a gentleman from trading to be able to pay the licence, it's very counterproductive. So I'm happy to second councillor McCammon on her. Thanks.
Thank you for that, councillor Hill. So, Caroline, we've got a motion and an amendment. And unfortunately, our counter-amendment's not got a supporter. I don't think anyone's got anything else to add to this at the minute. So does that go to roll call then now?
If you just bear with me, convenia, sorry, I'm just writing this down. So the motion is by councillor McCammon to issue a written warning to the licence holder. Can I just ask councillor McCammon, attached to that written warning, would you wish to impose a deadline for payment of that outstanding annual fee?
Yeah, obviously, that can be agreed among the members. But, yeah, I think it's, if this is going to go to a vote, I think that that needs, that condition needs to be on there. And it needs to be tight, Caroline, like I've said, there's no point in prolonging it any longer. You know, and I just feel that that's a more reasonable way forward.
Okay, so there's a motion by councillor McCammon to issue a written warning. Putting words in kind of like tight terms with imposing a deadline for payment of that annual fee. This motion is seconded by councillor Hill. Do we have an amendment?
I think I have an amendment, Caroline, which was also seconded by councillor Dashper.
Thank you.
For revoke the licence, as we deemed that way. We are being reasonable and that there's been almost a year's worth of contact here with different decisions coming from the licence holder. And we believe that the licence holder has had enough information, both written and spoken, to have made a decision and the opportunity to even pay this by direct debit.
Okay, thank you, convenia. So we have amended by yourself to revoke the licence, seconded by councillor Dashper. So I will just go through the roll call as appears on the agenda, whether motion or amendment. Convenia?
Amendment.
Councillor Dashper?
Amendment.
Councillor Hagman?
I will abstain, Caroline. Thank you.
Councillor Hagman is abstaining. Councillor Hill?
Motion.
Councillor Ingles is not with us today, and councillor McCammon?
Motion.
Motion. Okay, thank you. So if you just bear with me, members. We have two for the amendment, being the proposer and the seconder. We have two for the motion, being the proposer and the seconder. We have councillor Hagman abstaining, so the casting vote goes with the convenia.
I'll take my casting vote and go with them, please.
Thank you, that's noted, councillor, convenia. So you've exercised your casting vote for the amendment, which is to revoke the premises licence. So the licenceful decision of the board today is to revoke the premises licence. And the premises licence holder will be notified of that in very early course because revocation. Okay, thank you. That's moving on to item number four.
Thank you, Caroline. I have number four, Licensing Scotland Act two thousand and five, premises licence review, section thirty six. Premises, Regis Bar and Function Suite, thirty six, Dalrymple Street, Stranraer. Premises licence holder David Ryan, report by clerk to the board. David Ryan's not with us today, so clerk, could you please go through the procedure?
Thank you, convenia. So can I just check that Mr Ryan does not have a representative here this morning to speak on his behalf? And perhaps convenia just further check that there has been no, has a payment been made of this outstanding annual fee? Perhaps you may just wish to ask Aiden Sloner, senior licensing officer, whether any attempt has been made throughout the duration of this hearing to pay this annual fee? Or does it still remain outstanding?
It remains outstanding. Yes, fee is still outstanding, no attempt to pay has been made.
Okay, thanks for that, Aiden. So although this is similar, it must in law be treated separately from item number three. So the premises here are Regis Bar and Function Suite at Dalrymple Street in Stranraer. The premises licence holder is David Ryan. We do not have Mr Ryan here today. And nor do you have any representative to speak on his behalf. On the eleventh of May, two thousand and twenty-three, the LSO Licensing Standards Officer submitted a request for a review of a premises licence in respect of Regis Bar and Function Suite. That application is detailed at appendix one. In terms of grounds for review, the ground for review is one or more of the conditions to which the premises licence is subject has been breached, namely, non-payment of the annual fee being some of two hundred and twenty pounds for the period of two thousand and twenty-two into two thousand and twenty-three. That being a condition number ten of schedule three of two thousand and five act, that the annual fee must be paid in terms of the regulations, which is that the sum falls to be paid on the first of October, two thousand and twenty-three. And you've heard from our senior licensing officer that the team do offer installment options in terms of monthly and quarterly. The LSO can only make a premises licence review application if they have served upon the licence holder a section fourteen notice. And that a licence holder has failed to take the action specified in that notice. So, members, the section fourteen notice is detailed at appendix two to the report. And you'll notice that in that notice, it states that breach of mandatory condition number ten of the licence and non-payment of the annual fee of two hundred and twenty pounds, requesting payment by eleven a.m. on the first of the sixth of April. And payment has not yet been made, so that outstanding fee still remains. If you look at paragraph two point seven- If you look at paragraph two point seven of the report, apologies for the typos there, that is for the printing unit. It is not the licensing team, I can assure you. In terms of correspondence, that has been made with the premises licence holder. The correspondence was sent out. Now, I'm not sure the specific date because the printing unit has made an error, but it has been January two thousand and twenty three. And there has been correspondence detailed at appendix three, my letter going out on the second of February two thousand and twenty three. Then we've had service of the section fourteen notice on the premises licence holder requesting payment of the annual fee and that was served on the thirty first of March two thousand and twenty three. Of course, you may wish to, members, receive an update from Emma Connolly, our LSO, speaking to the terms of Ms Farrell's report. So it's a two-stage process here. And the first stage is to determine whether in law a ground for review exists. Has there been breach of mandatory condition number ten of schedule three of Licensing Scotland Act two thousand and five? That there has been no payment of this annual fee, payment of which is a legal obligation. If a ground for review is established, you may make an order. You do not need to make an order in law, even if you find that a ground for review is established. The powers in terms of, excuse me, making an order are detailed at paragraph three point three of the report that you can issue a written warning to the licence holder. You can make a variation of the licence. You can suspend the licence for such periods as you may determine, or you can revoke the licence. If you revoke the licence, it ceases to have effect immediately and there is no duty to pay that outstanding annual fee thereafter because there is no licence in law. If you suspend the licence for such periods as you may determine, then the payment of the annual fee obligation still remains, but the individual licence holder will not be able to trade. If you issue a written warning to the licence holder, the licence does remain in effect, the licence holder can trade. And there will be the obligation to pay the annual fee. And of course, it's also open to you to take no further action. In terms of procedure, Convenor, sorry, my voice has gone. In terms of procedure, you may wish to hear from Emma Connolly, the LSO, to speak to the terms of Julia Farrell's report, maybe give an update on any contact that Ms Farrell may have made with Mr Ryan and then of course, any questions from yourselves to Emma and thereafter have a discussion amongst yourselves. And of course, I'm here to give guidance and assistance as required and then just confirm when you are going into session formally. Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. Emma, would you like to come in and give us your report, please?
Thank you, Convenor. So as you'll note, I'm again not the author of this report. However, I do have an update. Since the report was produced on the fifteenth of June, Julia Farrell had a telephone conversation with Mr Ryan, the licence holder, who had again reiterated that he wanted to surrender the licence. Following that conversation, Julia Farrell sent an email to the licence holder outlining the consequence of the surrendering and what that would mean for the premises. And a request was made within that email that the licence holder replied confirming that he wished to proceed with surrendering. A blank email was received from the licence holder. There was no content to the email at all, so we were unable to assume confirmation that he wanted to proceed with the surrender. Again, yesterday, the twentieth of June, Julia Farrell attempted to make contact with Mr Ryan but was unable to speak with him. My last update with Julia was that the premises remains closed and continues to not be trading.
Thanks for that, Emma.
Thank you.
So members, do we believe we've got the ground for review? I believe we do, but I'm opening this up to the members.
Yep, happy to confirm that as a, as a way forward. Yep.
But thank you, Catherine Hagman. So members, we've found a ground for review and I believe we're now into session. And do we have any comments or thoughts coming from the floor? Catherine McCann?
Yeah, just a very quick one, Convenor. I think this is similar but, but different to the last application and that it hasn't been trading. So I would happy to revoke it.
Thank you, Catherine. I'm quite comfortable saying that. Catherine Hagman?
Yep, thank you, Convenor. I think this is different to the previous one. And while I had concerns about leaving the, the board vulnerable in the previous item, I think we have got a different set of circumstances as detailed in the report in the appendix once. It makes very clear that the, the premises has, is closed, you know, so we have that written confirmation that it had. And we've had three, three lots of confirmation now, okay, albeit one of them verbal, that the licence holder wishes to revoke, or wishes to, to no longer have a licence. So I think the circumstances are very different in this case. My only question, my, or no, it's not a question really, but in terms of any outstanding fees, do they, does that still remain out outstanding if we're revoking the licence or will there be a proportion that is still due up until today? And will that be subject to essentially the debt collection process of the local authority, just to get clarification on that one?
Thank you, Counsel. If I may, Convenor, answer that, is that okay? Yeah, so if you're minded to revoke the licence today, the outstanding annual fee for two thousand and twenty two to two thousand and twenty three will remain that two hundred and twenty pound, that legal duty to pay. Then for this next financial year, there will be an apportioned payment also due up to, if, up to the date you revoke the licence, if you are minded to revoke today, so you have two hundred and twenty pounds. And then there'll be a little bit extra that will be apportioned. In terms of chasing that sum, it's usually, we can pursue it via shared court officers, but given the, the, the amount of the sum, it's probably going to be offset against chasing. In other words, it would not be worth the teams, while it probably costs more money to chase and raise a court action than it would be to chase this sum. That's not a definitive response, but I understand that we don't normally seek to, 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 to raise an action in the Sheriff Court for, for payment of outstanding fees. We just let the losses lie. That's a general position.
Thank you for that, Caroline. Catherine Hagman, does that answer your, your question there?
Yeah, no, it does. I think what I was looking for is would this follow the local authorities' guidelines on outstanding debt? And certainly if the, you know, if that is the case, that, I mean, I don't, I don't think, it's not for us to determine the cost benefits of chasing two hundred and twenty pounds plus that small amount. But that's, that's almost a side issue. But no, I'm, I'm happy to support Counselor McCann in, in this proposal that we look to go straight to revoking for the details that I outlined previously.
I hear that, Catherine. So members, do we have any other thoughts on this one or proposals? I don't have any proposals on the floor. So Catherine McCann, I believe that your proposal is going through. Would you like to add one?
Convenor, sorry, did you just speak to me? I can see you look smushing, but I can't hear you.
And I was saying that with no other motions or amendments to the floor, I think that Counselor McCann's suggestion is unanimous. Would you like to give us the procedure on that?
Okay, thank you, Convenor. That's clear. So just to confirm, as a board, you're of the opinion that a ground for review has been established, namely that there has been non-payment of the statutory annual fee. And moving on, you, you have just made a decision unanimously to revoke the licence. Is that correct, Convenor? Just to confirm that that is a unanimous decision. Okay, thank you for that. So Mr Ryan will be notified of that decision to revoke the licence in very early course.
Thank you, members. I've got no other comments in business, so we're free to go. Thank you for your attendance today.
Thanks.